So I'd like to, it being a little bit after seven o'clock on Thursday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Wenham, which is occurring over Zoom during the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic directives. The meeting is being recorded, as you heard, and notes also will be taken. On the meeting from the Planning Board of myself and weeks, I'm the chairman of the board, chairperson, I suppose, Dan Pascarella, the vice chair, and members Peter Clay and Rick Woodland, and is that David Anderson?
Yeah.
David here.
Also have members of the public, most of whom, oh, and and our staff, Margaret Hoffman and Catherine Tinsley and Steve Pullos, the new town manager is an administrator. Do you want to introduce yourself, Steve?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everybody. Steve Pullos, new town administrator, about two, two weeks in, so don't ask me too many questions. I figure I still got another month or so of not knowing the answer. Right, Peter?
I think you get a grace period.
Yeah.
Not sure how long it extends. I'm wondering if the board would be comfortable switching the agenda. We have a continued public hearing. But then most of the folks, I think, who are on our meeting right now are interested in the master plan update. And so I wonder if we can switch the agenda items. Board comfortable with that?
Sure.
Yep.
Board is yes? Okay, so we're going to take the master plan update. We have really some information, I think, to hear from Margaret about what has happened since we last met. And then we need to recommend to the select board members for an advisory committee for the master plan process. And Margaret, I don't know if you would like to say a few words about all of that.
Yeah, sure. So since our last meeting, I've reached out to the boards and committees that you identified as the committees that you'd like to see represented on the master plan advisory committee. And we did hear from I, I actually have heard from most of the boards and committees. The only one that I haven't heard back from was the Finance and Advisory Committee. But we should have a representative from the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't see Erica on tonight, but Erica Champa was, you know, recommended by the Affordable Trust. Conservation Commission has recommended Phil Colaruso, and he is on this evening. The Council on Aging has recommended Marty Lowry, and Marty is here tonight. The Open Space and Rec Committee has not officially told me who they would like to have represent them. But Ernest Ashley is here representing the Water Board, I believe. And, yep, and the Open Space Committee, I think, is is trying to nudge Vincent Fennel to to be their representative. And the School Committee is represented by David Frankel, and there's David, David's here, David Frankel, sorry. So those are the members of the committees that are expressing interest in being on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. We also got five responses from residents, people who at large, who want to be the at-large members. The board did agree to go up to four at-large members. So the people who have expressed interest, most of them are here. I see Joanne Frisella, Deb Evans, Kirsten Alexander, and there were two other people. We had, oh, Sue Petrollia sent me an email saying she might be about ten or fifteen minutes late, but she is going to try to get on tonight. And Dana Bagan, who is on the ZBA, has also expressed interest, not as a ZBA member, but as a resident. There was one other young gentleman who sent me an email. His name is Walker Goodridge. He sent me the one email expressing interest, but he never got back to me. So I, and I don't expect that he's interested anymore.
You being Megan, right?
Sorry?
You being Megan.
Yes, hey, Meg.
Yeah, hey, Meg.
Hey, Megan. Yeah, that was, that was a great email that he sent. So what I anticipate, Ian, is that the Planning Board can discuss, you all have copies of the letters of interest that you received. And so hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. And then if you want, you can discuss with the at-large members what their thoughts are about being on the master plan. And then my hope is that by the end of the evening, you can make recommendation to the select board for the members that, people that you'd like to and for appointment.
That sounds great. I would, I would like and and ask the other members their views on this, but I would like each at-large person just to say a few words about what they want to bring to the committee and their commitment to it. This is going to be a process of a meeting a month and additional homework, I hate to say it. And a number of public meetings in addition to the meeting a month of the committee itself. So it's, it is a time commitment. It's a great opportunity, I think, to to really help think through and shape the future of the town. But I want to just make sure that everyone knows that it's a, it will be a fairly significant time period, however, only over a limited period of time, if that makes sense. Since this is, this is a process that we expect will take, at least as far as the committee is concerned, about a year to eighteen months only. So yeah, so it, other members of the board comfortable with hearing a couple of minutes from each of the at-large folks about their interest in the, in the process and their understanding of it. I think that would be helpful if if there's anyone who hasn't had a chance to read in detail all the letters. And if if that is something the board is comfortable with, I think my vice chairman, Mr. Pascarella, has his hand up.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good idea. I think it makes sense. I just wanted to comment on we received letters from, I think, members of other committees in the, in the town, which was nice, but my, my expectation was we were going to let those committees choose for themselves who they wanted to put forward. Is that what the rest of the board thinks as well? I'm just trying to map out how we're going to approach the rest of the night.
I, that was my understanding, is that the, the committees were charged with putting someone forward and that we would be happy to accept that on their behalf, and that the only question was who the at-large members would be. I don't think we have committees that have submitted to different people, have we?
I don't think so.
No. And just to clarify, I just asked everyone to send a letter of interest, just so in case when the select board go to a point, they have some information about everybody who wants to be on the committee.
Yeah, that's great.
I, I agree that we should probably just focus on the at-large candidates and listen to them, maybe three to five minutes or even three minutes of why, why this is important to them, why I think it's important to win them. There are, there are two things, too, that I want to add to this whole thing that we were presenting to the, to the select board. Maybe we can discuss that after the candidates speak. Is we're going to make a list of recommendations for the entire slate. And I assume that that slate would be voted on in its entirety, not individuals, so that they can either approve our recommendation or disprove it en masse. And then the second thing that I wanted to bring up today in relation to what we're going to provide to the select board after tonight's meeting is I believe that we need to come up with a charge for the group. And I think that members at large should understand that charge to make sure that they're comfortable with performing that test. Because right now, I don't think we've focused in on exactly what, what, what that group's going to be doing.
That is an excellent point. And I wonder if anyone on the board would like to speak to it, the charge question. I think the charge, from my understanding, the charge is to work with and support the consulting firm and the staff in preparing and offering to the public for participation the various elements of the master plan for the Town of Wenham, which would look out over a period of a couple of decades and discuss not only the required elements that the state requires, but also other issues that are specifically pertinent to Wenham. So I, I don't know if other people have a different idea of the charge to the committee.
My, my thought is that it was even more general than that, and is that we were making a recommendation to the select board for an advisory committee who was going to work with our outside consultant and provide advice to the planning board throughout the master planning process. I mean, that may be, I don't know if that's too general, but that was my understanding in that our consultant was sort of going to fill in more of the details.
And I, I agree with you. I think it can be broad like that, and it's an advisory committee to the planning board who has to then present the master plan to the town, right?
So. Yes.
Just general.
Okay, Catherine, I'm wondering if you have captured Dan's more general.
I did. I have yours and his.
Yeah, and I, I will withdraw mine in favor of the more general, particularly since we don't have the consultant on tonight to talk through the details of the various meetings she would like help with and and so forth. I think we should leave it at the general for the time. I agree with that. Does anyone, any of the other board members have anything they want to add to that?
No.
Nodding your head. Peter says no.
Um, yes.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Peter.
So that means that the people, the only people who should, who can remain on if they want to are the at-large people.
Right, unless the other folks would just be interested in.
Right.
I would welcome everybody to stay if they'd like to, but I don't think there's the need to commit to the next hour or two. Right? Great if you stayed.
Wait a minute, did you, did you just say two hours, Rick?
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, worried.
But we'll, we'll go back to the, the request for.
At least you listened, Dan. You listened. That's good.
Two to five minutes.
The Red Sox start at nine thirty-five.
In the interest of everyone's time, which I think is precious. So should we go in alphabetical order by last name? How would that work?
No, I'm sorry. It's Sue Petrollia. I'm, I was late because I got tied up at work. So, or, or just to catch me up, we're saying that we're not prepared to discuss the master plan committee members at this point, is that right?
No, we're asking, no, no, we're asking the at-large committee members to say a couple of words about you and your interest and because, because we have to recommend a slate to the Board of Selectmen, and just because everyone's here and we'd just like to hear from you.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Sue, there are some people on board that have been recommended to be on, they, they've been selected by their town committee to be on the group. And those are the people that I think we were referring to, that if they want to drop off, they could drop off.
Okay, thank you.
So what you missed was that we reached out to boards and committees and heard back from a number of them. The only, the only committee that we've asked for and haven't heard back from is finance, as I understand it. And Open Space and Recreation is trying to ask a particular member, and he's considering it, given the, the time issues. I will say that Open Space and Recreation is represented by Ernest and me. So it, it's not without coverage. But anyway, I, I wonder if, Kirsten, are you comfortable going first? I'm putting you on the spot here.
Yep, that's fine. Our pizza just got delivered, but I'm going to ignore it for now.
Well, if you, if you speak really quickly, you can then turn your camera off.
Exactly, exactly. So hi, everybody. I think I've, I've met many of you from various committees and things. I live over on Larch Row. I have, I put in my letter, but I've been on the, I was vice chair of the three hundred seventy-fifth committee. I've been a member of the Town Government Study Group and a member of the Hamilton Wenham Cultural Council in terms of town committees that I've been on, and then also have been on the board of the Garden Club, the Hamilton White, Hamilton Wenham Human Rights Coalition, which I'm currently the vice president of. And I'm the Membership and Development Chair at the Wenham Village Improvement Society and Chair of the Wenham Democratic Town Committee. So I care a lot about Wenham and its future. I'm also the daughter of an urban planner, so I literally, as a tiny little kid, was attending urban planning classes at MIT, the graduate level. I say that, it was my first college, but so I just grew up, you know, thinking about these issues. I've worked at Historic New England running membership, so I went to about probably more first-period homes than most people will be to, in, to in their lifetimes. So I think a lot about the history, but also the future of communities like ours and how, how we're going to be able to survive and thrive in the future, and people can afford to live and stay here at a time when taxes keep going up, and I don't think are going to go down anytime soon. I've also had a daughter in the public schools, so I've paid a lot of attention to the school system. And I've worked as a marketing consultant with the Town of Hamilton, so I've had connections there. So I think what I would bring is a lot of marketing savvy. You know, work on things like surveys and events and getting the word out. I'm very familiar with Facebook, which I use a lot for marketing, both with other social media, and I have a good network of people to bring in and get involved. I am a consultant. I work at home, so I have a pretty flexible schedule, and I just came off of two boards, so I have some time in my schedule for that. And I've been really pushing Wenham to have a master plan. When I found out we hadn't had one since, you know, a comprehensive one since the sixties, which is when I was born, I thought, uh-oh. I think we need something so that we're all on the same page and can move forward. Otherwise, without a plan, how can we, you know, have a common vision and move forward, you know, no matter who's in office? Or on a committee or, or in the TA role or, or whatever. So that, that's my background.
Thank you. That's great. I would ask if you're not speaking, if you could mute, because there was some crinkling. I don't know where it came from, but it was a little difficult to hear the parts of Kirsten's conversation. So I think the next person is Dana, if you are open your camera and say a few words.
Hi, Anne. Hi, everyone. Dana Began. I live at one fourteen Cedar Street. I am a current member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I live in Wenham. I've lived here for ten years. Three daughters and one of whom now lives in Brooklyn, but she graduated the regional and one in high school and one in elementary school. And as I mentioned, I'm on this, I'm currently a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. But I've also taken part in, in many, you know, opens, the Open Space and Recreation Plan. I was on the Economic Development Committee. And I've looked at Wenham from, from various angles from that perspective. I, I also have volunteered for the library. I was on the, the board of the Friends of the Library, volunteered in the schools, have, have coached teams and mainly soccer as well. I, I think this is a really exciting opportunity as somebody who just as a personal passion is, is really interested in land use and the appropriate land use, open space, historical architecture, economic needs of the town. This is, this is something that just really interests me. I think it's really important for Wenham. We're a great town. We have a lot of great resources and we could be a lot better. Thank you.
Thanks. I think the next person on my list is Deb Evans.
Okay, I think I figured out how to unmute. Did I, did I get to it?
You did.
Okay, good.
You're all good.
Well, if you hear my dogs barking, please don't judge me for that. I know many of you. For those that I don't, my name is Deb Evans. I live at twelve Porter Street in Wenham. My husband and I have been in town for thirty years. We did not grow up here. I grew up in Sudbury. He grew up in central New York, so we are far from being locals. We will never be actual locals, I think, unless you were born here. But we have two kids, both have been born at Beverly Hospital, raised in the community. Bethany's twenty-four and Andrew's twenty-eight. Both of them have appropriately gone off and are doing their own thing, one in Boston and the other in Washington, D.C. When I first moved to town, I had a corporate job. I ran sales and marketing for a financial software company. So at that point, I was treading water, but I gave that career episode because I was really missing out on raising my kids, and I needed structure. So I jumped in to volunteer at kind of anything that I possibly could. Certainly the schools, youth soccer board, both of those I have served on. I was a past president of the Hamilton Wenham Education Fund. I served on the Wenham Finance Committee. And then also four years on the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee on, in a lot of different capacities, as, as many boards do. It's not just the board work. It's a lot of the committee work as well. So as I'm the negotiations committee, the capital planning committee and other things like that. I also volunteered extensively in I coaching youth soccer. I coached, this was not volunteer, we got about five cents a minute, or an hour, I should say. I coached the Hamilton Wenham Girls tennis team for a period of years, which was really fun, coaching kids that weren't mine and high school tennis is great. So I bring sort of a, a different sort of background to this. After kind of I was able to feel like my kids could have some independence, I I, I joined the real estate world. I sell residential real estate in our North Shore communities. I work at J Barrett. And most of my business, because it's kind of my core competency, is why do people want to live in Hamilton Wenham? And especially with our tax rates, I do find in the thirteen years that I've been doing this, that question has come up more and more and more, as our tax rates have kind of diverged from our surrounding communities. So I feel like I would bring to the planning process kind of eyes and ears on the ground. I do, I mean, I'm, that's what I do for a living. I just kind of talk to people and educate about community. They educate me about their thinking. And I think it's important to hear that from a variety of different people, from a variety of different age groups that maybe don't have time to volunteer their time, but also for people who make decisions to go other places. I think it would be key to kind of, if, to the extent we can, to capture that information and kind of inform the process. I do believe that master planning is absolutely essential. Our town is facing a lot of different challenges. I think it's a fabulous place to live. That's why I live here, and that's why I feel like I'm very successful at what I do, but I also feel like behind the scenes and maybe coming a little bit more to the front of the scenes are some things that really do need to be focused on and through a framework. And I think that's what I see the master planning process to be, is creating some sort of framework for our community's future and goals.
Thank you. Joanne Frisella, I know you have introduced yourself previously to the board, but to the other members of the committee who are on, it would be nice to hear from you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm very excited about this opportunity that the Town of Wenham has to prepare a master plan after such a long time, and I just would love to see us really make the most of this opportunity. And so that's really the reason I'm interested in serving on the Steering Committee. I've lived in Wenham for twelve years. I lived at the Boulders on Wallace Drive. I also am on the Hamilton Wenham Community Garden Committee and have been for ten years since we founded it, and I'm on the board at WVIS. Professionally, I am an urban planner. I worked as an urban planner for nearly thirty-five years. I, a good part of that was involved in public outreach and community engagement. I worked for a few architect, engineering and planning firms. And a lot of the work involved on building community support for projects, reaching out to the community to develop a vision for a project, to engage the community in identifying issues of importance to them and developing the plan to really address those concerns of the community. And I, I feel that that is an important part of what we're going to be doing here on the Steering Committee, working closely with the consultant in the planning board. So I've had a, a number of projects that I've worked on over the years that all are very similar in a way to what we're going to be doing on the master plan. And I have worked with a few communities to develop master plans exactly like the one that we're going to be developing here. So I think all of that experience is, is very relevant and could be very helpful as we move forward.
Thank you.
That's sure.
And I think the next person is Marty Lowry.
I'm sorry, Ian. Marty is a representative from the COA.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I think Sue, Sue Petrollia is the last.
Is the last person. Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sue Petrollia. I live on Wenham Road, been here for twenty years. I think that everybody sounds great. You should take everyone. My focus, I believe in the master plan completely because I believe things that aren't planned don't happen. I totally echo Deb Evans and having a framework for the towns within which to make decisions. And I think that is really important for ongoing health and, and growth of the community. My focus, I believe, would be sustainability, and that sustainability encompasses environmentally, economically, organizationally and, and socially, all the reasons, all the things that we do and we think about and we breathe and we look at and we live under need to be long-term sustainable for the health of all the generations we hope to support in this town. And that's, I think, in the snapshot where I would focus.
Okay, and, and thank you. And Margaret, we have, can you remind us the numbers of, on of, of committee folks plus the at-large members?
Yep. Yeah, so the board at their May twenty-sixth meeting decided to have one Affordable Housing Trust representative, one Conservation Committee, one COA, one Finance and Advisory, one from Open Space, one from Water, one select board member. Two planning board members will be on at the meeting at all times, and one school committee meeting and a school committee, sorry. And then up to four at-large members and town administrator as an ad hoc.
So if I'm totaling that up, that sounds like seventeen, sixteen or seventeen people. I'm just wondering, everyone, yeah, everyone's fifteen, fifteen with four, right?
Well, fourteen with four and not counting the town administrator. His role will be as needed and more ad hoc.
Voting.
So you've got four, fourteen people. So you decided on four at-large.
I'm wondering if the board would entertain the idea of selecting all five of these volunteers, each of whom bring something unique and different to the advisory committee.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect, Anne, and we can discuss it?
I will move. I will some move.
Well, before you move, I, I think what's, we're just in discussion right now, right?
Yes.
Before you make that motion, I, I'd like to hear from Dave on this because I know Dave had some concerns about size. Before you make that motion, I'd, I'd like to hear from Dave on this because I know Dave had some concerns about size. Um,
I, every single person that just spoke needs to be on this committee. That is my hundred percent. Okay. If anything, it's the folks who are already represented in town government that I'm worried less about hearing from. They are, they have committees, they preside over and they know how to contact us. Every, it's, it would be a miserable task to root out one from the five people that just spoke. And so I do not want to do that tonight. I would bring all five of them in. I don't, that's not a concern for me. And, and frankly, I'm happy with the composition of this advisory committee. And I think it's going to do fantastic work and I'm excited for the folks that showed up tonight. I mean, that's a real commitment to this town and I am enthusiastic and confident that this advisory committee is going to do well based on what you all have presented tonight.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and I agree with that a hundred percent as well. I, I thought this, I mean, this is a really impressive group of volunteers we've had step forward. So I don't think we should waste time returning to whittle one person out.
Okay, so my motion is on the table. Can I have a second?
Peter Clay seconds.
All right, I'll take the votes. Um, Weeks says I. Pascarella?
Aye.
Clay?
Yes.
Anderson?
Aye.
Woodland?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So thank you all. Um, Margaret, would you mind spending a little bit of time to talk about the process going forward?
Yes. So what I'll do is send the list of, um, all of these at-large people and all of the committee members to the select board for their June twenty-first meeting. Um, at that meeting, I anticipate the select will appoint these people to the master plan, uh, committee. Once that committee is formed, um, we're anticipate the kickoff meeting is June twenty-ninth, I think twenty-ninth. I'm sorry, let me get my calendar up. Um, so it, that, that evening of
It is the twenty-ninth because I'm on a plane coming home from Colorado.
Yep, that's right. Um, so that'll be the kickoff meeting. That meeting is where this committee will get together and, you know, take shape. The, I believe the consultant will help with directing them and telling them exactly what the charge is. And they'll want to, um, appoint a chairperson to that committee, chairperson and a vice chairperson. So I believe that will all happen with the consultant. Um, and then they'll, they'll set up a schedule of meetings. So, um, it should be pretty smooth sailing from here. Once the select board, they'll appoint their member. Um, and then they'll appoint all of these people to this newly formed committee.
You never know about that renegade select board.
Well, that's the wild card. So, you know.
What would be renegade? Could I explain, Peter, since you are on the select board, could you explain what renegade means, please?
Well, what was, what do you expect to happen, Peter?
Right.
Um, I, I'm, I was just joking, guys. I think they'll probably say, you know, boom. Just like we did with, um, all the people that are, are the at-large plus all the committee people.
Well, since you're an insider, Peter, we would hope that you would, uh, make sure that happens.
We would, I very much appreciate everybody's willingness to sit on our meeting tonight and give us a little bit about your background and why you care so much about this process. I must say I care about it quite a lot and I'm very happy that it's actually lifting off. Um, and I'm sorry, I can't be there on the twenty-ninth. Um, I think members of the planning board are likely to want to sit in on the first couple of meetings just to hear how it's going. So Margaret, you might have to double post, but.
Yeah, and that's, we anticipate we'll have to do that throughout this process. It, it's not really that big of a deal. We'll just, if we anticipate more than three members or more of the planning board being at the meetings, we'll just double post.
And I see that recording secretary Tinsley has her hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Before you get too much further into your meeting, was your motion simply to consider all five at-large members? Or was that to recommend to the select board that they be appointed?
To recommend that they be appointed.
That was not in your verbiage. Can you re-vote that, please?
Sorry. My motion is to recommend that all five members, uh, all five of the people on the call, on the Zoom meeting tonight, including, um, Kirsten Alexander, Dana Beegan, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Deb Evans, Sue Petrollia and Joanne Frisella be, um, appointed to the advisory committee to help the planning board with the master plan.
Peter Clay seconds.
I think we took the vote. Do we need to vote again?
It's a new motion. Please do.
Yeah. Okay. Weeks says I.
Clay says yes.
Pascarella says aye.
Anderson aye. And Woodland aye.
Thank you.
Um, oh, go ahead, Ian.
Don't know who is saying if I could, Margaret?
Yeah, um, it, it might be helpful too, if you make a motion to recommend the, the people from the, um, town boards and committees that have expressed their interest in being on the board also. Along with the, hopefully I'll hear from open space and finance committee.
So I'll make them, I'll, I'll move that in addition to the five at-large members, we also recommend to the select board, members from the committee, uh, committees we identified at the May twenty-sixth, um, planning board meeting.
Peter Clay seconds.
Weeks says aye.
Pascarella says aye.
Clay says aye.
Anderson aye. Woodland aye.
Thanks.
We get Peter to switch from yes to aye.
We
I'm like select board style, planning board style. What can I tell you?
We, we have, uh, let me just make one point, please. Um, and that is that we can't recommend people by name just because we don't have all the names. So, um, that's why we did it. I think that's why your motion was as it was, Dan.
Yes, correct.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So I'm, I'm going to make a, a, a plug here, picking up on something that Deb said during her statement that the number one ranked, uh, general's girls tennis team has their second, uh, tournament match tomorrow reporting college. So good luck.
Women's lac's doing really well as well.
Oh, general. Okay, I think, um, that having, that business having been taken care of, we can go back to the continue.
Um, Ian, if I, if I could just speak to Steve for a minute, Steve, um, I just wanted to confirm that we'll send this to the, uh, select board through you. I'll send you a, a memo early next week, letting you know how the planning board voted.
Yep, uh, yeah, please do. We, we'll have a prep meeting on Tuesday afternoon. Set the agenda up, so.
Okay, great.
We have it by, you know, midday Tuesday. That'd be very helpful.
Yes, I'll have it to you by Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. So that business being taken care of, um, if anyone wants to stay on, they're more than welcome, of course. But we are going to the continued public hearing on the Cherry Street Audubon property. Um, my understanding is that they have requested a continuance again until July. Margaret, do you have?
Um, yes, you, you should have a copy of the letter, um, that they sent asking for a continuance. Do you want me to pull it up, Ian, or do you have a copy?
No, I think, does it, does anyone in the, on the board need to see it? Hasn't had a look already.
Is this their third request for extension?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the reason, Peter, they, they did send me an email saying they're trying to get the engineering firm to get all of the details done. They have to do some soil testing. So getting that work done has been time consuming for them. But they do hope to have something to us for the July meeting.
Margaret, do you know whether they're continuing to meet with neighbors? Because I know that was quite a concern.
I haven't heard what they have met with the neighbors again. I know after your last meeting with them, they did meet with neighbors and have been in communication with them, but I haven't heard anything since.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I would take a motion. Sorry, did someone have a question?
That would be to July fourteenth is your July meeting date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept their, their request for continuance?
So move.
In a second.
Peter Clay seconds.
Take the vote. Weeks says aye. Pascarella?
Aye.
Clay?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Woodland?
Yes.
So Ian, if you could just say, um, we'll just indicate that this hearing is continued to Thursday, July
July fourteenth?
Yep, at seven.
Twenty-two at seven PM. Or soon thereafter, as it can be heard. Okay, so then the other items on the agenda for tonight, um, are the meeting minutes from May twelfth, May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth.
Um, and I apologize, I didn't get you the minutes from the May twenty-sixth meeting yet. Um, so we'll have those on the next agenda.
All right, um, I know I had some tiny tweaks to the two that we received, so I don't know if other people did as well. Ms. Tinsley, what is the, do you want us to pull them up and look at them?
Oh. Yeah, Dan sent me a couple of redlined, uh, edits on the, I don't remember which ones, but I got his edits. Yeah. So it's up to
I wasn't at the twelfth, so.
Okay. So these are the twelfth. Are these the redlines I sent?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. This is the original. Um, I don't
remember where the, I think, oh, I think, uh, the change I wondered about is it says Ms. Weeks suggested a meeting be scheduled with Ms. Goldberg. I think that's Ms. Golson.
It would be. Thank you.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
And that was the only real thing I saw.
I've got that, Margaret. You don't have to.
Okay, great.
Does anyone else have any changes they wanted to suggest?
Um, I already sent mine to chat. Wow, what's going on there? Does that sound bad? Because it does in my ears. Um, I
Hear anything?
I sent Catherine, um, my changes and I actually used track changing, which is a breakthrough in my word skills.
Uh, do you remember where they were? That's, this isn't that version, unfortunately, because
I don't know, Catherine.
I, I don't have, I'm not, that's not my screen share. I think, um, this is where I think this board needs to consider doing live edits on Google Docs. It just gets
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine. I do think that the last, um, line in this administrative master plan update block should say Ms. Frisella and not Ms. Joanne. I just noticed that.
Yes, it should.
Right down the bottom, last line. There you go.
Peter, did you send some comments or edits to Catherine and myself?
I did, but I, I, I didn't save them, so.
I don't have any edits from Peter. I do for select board, Peter, but not from, oh, planning board.
Okay, you're probably right. No, I'm sure you're right.
Um, the only other thing that I had in my redline was it, this, under the call to order, it, it notes that Dan wasn't here or there, but he came late. So I wonder if we just want to amend. Or were you not there for, oh wait, you weren't there?
I was, I was at a graduation.
You were at a graduation. That's right. Congratulations, by the way. That's terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I think with that, if no one else has anything, we should ask for a, I should ask for a motion to, um, adopt the meetings, uh, the meeting minutes as amended. Anybody want to move that?
Oh, so move.
Let me have a second.
Second, Anderson.
Weeks says aye.
Clay says aye.
Pascarella?
Stain.
Right, Anderson?
Aye.
And Woodland?
Aye.
All right, so the twelfth meetings minutes are approved and then we have the nineteenth.
Yeah, my changes were pretty minor.
Do you remember where they were?
Um, yeah, hold on. You just have to.
I don't remember having any on this set.
Is it significant to note that, um, Gary Cheeseman stayed off camera?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't his meeting. He was just an official and present.
Well, that's my point is that I think he stayed off camera so that there wasn't an, an open meeting law violation with his attendance with Peter.
It says officials present, not participating. If you'd like me to add something more, I'm happy to do so.
No, not at all. I just remember him pointing that out, but it's fine. If you're good, I'm good.
Well, this is a new world we're in, so I, I, you know, I take your advice.
So I, I have my redline, um,
Do you have it? I was going to say, Dan, I just found it. Do you want me to pull it up or do you want?
Yeah, you, if I want to pull it up, that's fine.
Okay.
They're just, they're minor. I mean, there's nothing really, I don't think there's anything really.
Yeah, some, some of the typeface looks like smaller than, but I can't tell if that's just because I was looking at it on the screen. That was the only comment I had. And I don't know that it's really that important.
I mean, the first change is the planning board spoke in length. I just changed that to at length. In the next paragraph, since regarding the formal appointing of advisory steering committee, if it lies with the select board or the planning board, I said within the authority of the select board.
Great job.
Can you see those?
Oh, yes, good.
That's really helpful.
Okay. There they are. Sorry.
And then I think the most substantive one was on the next page, but not really substantive either.
Can you see that now?
Yep.
Yes.
That was right.
Is everyone comfortable with these changes? Are there any others that anyone sees need to be made? Hearing no comments, I'm going to take that as an okay. And so I would ask for a motion to approve the, um, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes as amended.
So move.
Second?
Second, Peter Clay.
Weeks says aye. Reporting
Pascarella says aye.
Clay says aye.
Woodland?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right, I think that, does it, I, do you, we can wait until the next meeting for the May twenty-sixth minutes?
Yeah.
Maybe do those and these at the same time. That would be great. So I think that, um, that's the end of our formal agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to bring up that hasn't been anticipated prior to the meeting?
Can we just review, and maybe Catherine can help us with this? If we could just review what our current language is for a charge that we're going to present to the select board along with the names of the, uh, at-large members?
Catherine, do you find that in your notes? Can you read it back?
Just let me get back to them. I was
Yep. Sounds great.
So the board members voted unanimously by roll call to support, to recommend, oh, that's the recommend one, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. And we kicked it off with what I thought was going to be a discussion and it ended, ended up being a recommendation.
You want the charge, right, Rick?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, one moment.
Just make sure it makes sense after we've been through this rest of the meeting.
Well, your motion was to support, to recommend to the Select Board and Advisory Committee to work with the outside consultant and provide advice throughout the master planning process to the Planning Board.
Hmm. Do we want to tighten that up a little bit so that it sounds like
I think we voted on it, Rick. I think the time to do that would have been when we put it forward and had a discussion on it.
Can we?
I'm just thinking all the advisory committee members have left the call at this point. If there is anyone had a comment on it.
Well, this is the charge, right?
Yeah.
This is, it sounds like we're literate, you know what I mean? It's like that, it's concise. And maybe we can wordsmith it later in another meeting. That's all I'm thinking.
If I could
I think it's got to go forward in the next week. So I don't think that's a possibility. If, if, does, do other people on the board want to reopen this and, and have a more, you try to wordsmith the language a little bit?
Peter Clay says no.
I'm, I don't think so. I mean, is it really necessary? I mean, I think that we know the advisory committee is an advisory committee and they're going to provide recommendations to us while working with the consultant, so.
I think it's probably something Margaret can do in the, in the letter, in the, in the, in the final document to Steve Poelis on Tuesday. I think it could just be, A, we could ask Margaret just to tighten up the language and make it just complete.
I think what probably will happen is this committee will be appointed and the Select Board will have a charge. I mean, a master plan advisory committee usually does a specific job. And that job is to work with the consultant and advise the Planning Board because the official keeper of the master plan is the Planning Board. They're the only board that can approve the master plan. We'll take it to town meeting for, you know, just to give it to the town. But it's not something that the town has to vote on or the Select Board has to vote on. The master plan is governed by the Planning Board under Mass General Law. So I think really I can do that, Rachel. And I'll put some information that this board wants to see the committee do, that, that what you want this committee to do. And that is to advise the Select, the Planning Board.
Great, thank you. As long as they don't have to do, as long as it's something that you can manipulate. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty general.
Great, thank you. Now I'm satisfied.
Anything else that anyone wants to put on the table tonight?
I just want to say that Deb Evans' glasses look wild.
Yeah.
With that blue look, crazy. I'm a little worried about you.
All right, well, we are going to take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn until July 14th at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. I will second that.
I, I would just say, you're, you're going to be meeting on June 20, 29th. This, the Planning Board should be at that kickoff meeting.
Oh, right.
So I'll amend.
You can't make it, but can everyone else make that meeting, June 29th? I know it's a funky week. It's before July 4th.
I think so. So I'll amend the motion to adjourn until June 29th.
For the master plan kickoff on June 29th. In fact, I can make a friendly amendment and then second it. Okay.
What time is that meeting?
7:00 PM, right?
Yeah, most likely at 7:00 PM. Is that a good time for this board or do you think we should do it at 6:00?
That's great for me.
I think we should do it at 6:00.
I'm, I'm better at 7:00, but it's what everybody agrees to. I don't get home from work in time to shove down the air.
Is it Zoom or is it?
Will it be in person?
It's going to be, no, it's going to be Zoom still. I think, yeah, in July 15th it expires. So it will be in person for the master plan meetings going forward after June, so.
Yay.
Seven, that's your typical time. So we can make it 7:00 PM.
I think we should make it at 7:00. It's consistent with what we typically do. And then once the advisory committee is established, they should set their meeting time.
Exactly.
All right. All right, so I have seconded this motion to adjourn until the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee on the 29th at 7:00 PM. I need, we need to take a vote. Weeks says aye. Pescarello?
Aye.
Clay?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Woodland?
Aye.
That adjourns the Planning Board for this night.
Thank you.
Thanks to all. Really excited about this finally happening. Yay.
Me too. I'm really excited about it.
Go Generals, go Celtics. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you for being on, Steve. Well, I'll see you on Tuesday.
Nice to meet everybody. Have a good night.
You too.